See.
Hi, Makayla Crowe.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will support the constitution.
that I will support the constitution.
and obey the laws.
and obey the laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and of the state of Maine.
and of the state of Maine.
that I will in all respects.
and I will in all respects.
observe the provisions.
observe the provision.
of the charter and ordinances.
and of the charter, sorry, and the charter of the ordinances.
of the town of Bucksport.
of the town of Bucksport.
and will faithfully discharge.
and will faithfully discharge.
duties.
duties.
of the office of dispatcher.
of the duties of the officer dispatcher.
very good, congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Next is consider minutes of previous meetings, we have town council minutes from ten twenty-two twenty-two, how would council like to proceed? Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Correspondence, we have a run of police call from October fourth twenty twenty-two and Down East Transportation Ridership Report from August of twenty twenty-two, any questions? Next item is ordinances to consider or introduce, we have none. Next is discussion items, um, infrastructure committee?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, at kind of a busy meeting, I'll try to be as brief as possible, there were four items that we discussed, the first was, we had a presentation from the, uh, group at the Historical Society, uh, they had come and talked to the town manager, uh, in the summertime about, um, something that they've talked to us about before in terms of their moisture problem at the, um, Historical Society building, uh, and put together a number of options, the one that they were primarily interested in, um, to make a long story short, um, is, would cost around a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to alleviate the moisture problem, they also have other options that would include some additional uses for, uh, what that, what the one hundred and sixty thousand dollars would do would bring the building up to street level and give it a full basement underneath, um, and then there would be some other options, obviously with, that would add to the price tag, that could make, uh, the space in the basement, uh, useful, uh, for the town, um, storage and restrooms of the like, um, and the, uh, the committee decided to bring that to the council for discussion on our next agenda.
Any questions?
Uh, the next thing, uh, on the agenda was, uh, there is property for sale adjacent to, um, the Miles Lane Trails out, uh, beyond Bayview Avenue, uh, as well as adjacent to school property, uh, apparently, apparently the asking price for the twenty-two acres that are being considered is seventy thousand dollars. Um, and, uh, it was also the, um, decision of the committee to bring that, uh, to the council for consideration on the next agenda.
Thank you.
Uh, the third item on the agenda was, uh, the town manager had received a request, uh, for it to place, um, for the council to consider placing flags on all poles on Main Street, um, the town manager, um, reminded us, for those of us that weren't on the council at the time, that a previous council had taken a look at that issue, um, and decided that flags, uh, we have several very high-profile, um, spots where, where the flag is, uh, is up in town, both, uh, down at the Veterans Memorial, as well as here on Flag Point, um, and, as well as, in, to observe the code, um, every flag should be lit, um, at night, um, there was no one here to speak for that, so the, the committee asked that we table that, um, until perhaps somebody is willing to come to us with more of a plan or request, at least. Uh, the last thing is, there was a, a request for outdoor meeting space, uh, Mary Jane Bush submitted that request, um, and the committee didn't have much to do here, uh, earlier today, Rich, um, and Sue, um, although Sue will say it's entirely rich, uh, there was a conversation around using the outdoor classroom at the, um, middle school, um, of course, this request is for seasonal use, um, and we could even, there could even be porta potties placed up there, uh, which would be useful for the, um, people using the trails as well, uh, the superintendent has emailed Sue and, um, is open to that, um, there is a process already in place for using facilities like that, so that pretty much, um, and, and Mary Jane was, um, in a, in attendance via phone in that meeting and was very amenable to that, uh, so that pretty much is taken care of, um, and then she also had a secondary request for the town to look at air quality and air handling, much like the schools have done, um, and primarily what would be the town office and, and a portion of the senior center, and per the town manager, this is possible, and we can look at how we could accomplish that through efficiency, man.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions? All right, uh, next is agenda items, first is resolve twenty twenty-three eighteen to approve the sewer commitment for the period July first twenty twenty-two through September thirtieth twenty twenty-two, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Next, we have a resolve twenty twenty-three nineteen to approve the sale of four-four-seven Millvale Road to the highest bidder, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved. Second.
I'm not sure if there's anyone here.
I was gonna, once I get the motion. So, have a motion for, uh, Michael Larrabee is the high bidder of eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty-five, fifty, eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Have a motion, second, any questions? Comments? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is resolve twenty twenty-three twenty to approve the sale of a tax-acquired property at six eighty-three River Road to the highest bidder, highest bidder is Tracy Patterson from Dream Realty, sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? Comments?
Yes, I have.
Yes, sir.
What is the, uh, value of this piece of property?
What is the value of this piece of property, I had those in the fire, um, the, if you want to give me a minute, I can go get those.
That, that's okay, has, has anybody come forward, any of the owners or people that are involved in the property before the sale, have they come forward at all?
This, uh, six eighty-three River Road, um, was sent to the record owner and signed for by the record owner, um, and ma- who made no contact with the town, um, because I'm aware that someone lives in the property, uh, we attempted to contact the person who lived in the property, and I went so far as to have the police deliver a letter and put it in the door of the property so that the people would be aware that, that they should contact us, and nobody ever did.
So they have no intention of contacting us, apparently?
They have not taken advantage of that, no.
Right.
And the Millvale Road parcel is an airship, the one we just did, is an airship parcel that had, um, a brother and a sister, the sister has since passed away, but no, no, it was signed for and nobody came forward on that one either, okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is resolve twenty twenty-three twenty-one to approve the sale of tax-acquired property at Zero Crossroad to the highest bidder, highest bidder is Quincy Mittman, twenty-one thousand three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Questions? Yes, sir, come here, please, state your name.
My name is David Craig.
Just so you know, Mr. Craig, I've got your calls, I've tried you twice.
Oh, you did?
Yes.
I haven't seen you.
Okay.
I haven't seen you come up on my calls, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I've been trying, you know, to get ahold of you.
Yeah.
I've clearly explained to you what's going on, um, I do have, um, probate, uh, so, in the process, um, and I have a plan, and there is, um, available money, uh, my mother's retirement comes in to pay this in full, I didn't, I had gotten the mail that Susan, you know, those are quiet letters, um, and I was not under the assumption at all that this was able to be sold, uh, before public court, um, cut up, and then, um, I, I talked to her and, um, noticed that, uh, she, she had expressed that, um, oh, it's, uh, what's happening, you know, there are bids being taken and nothing like, and then, so I, um, you know, I just wanted to let you guys know that I do have the means to pay this, and, uh, you know, if you guys could, please, put me on like a payment plan, I would be happy to, uh, pay that, and I do have, uh, cost of two thousand dollars saved up in the past couple of weeks, so, um, I can make a significant payment tomorrow, and, um, you know, I just really can't lose this property, you know, it's my mother being passed, and, uh, you know, to be honest with you, I haven't, uh, you know, even dealt with that, you know, I've been trying to get through into the house, and, uh, and it's just fully stopped, and, uh, you know, it's been tough out there, so, I just want you guys to know that I am trying, uh, work out somewhere, send firewood and whatnot, and, uh, I was just keeping all the lights on, and, you know, um, you know, my heart and soul is, uh, in this property, and I want you guys to know I would do everything possible to pay these payments, if you give me a chance.
Questions?
Yes, you, you say you have two thousand dollars now?
Yeah.
Are you, are you ready to pay that tonight to get this?
Well, it's, it's in the bank, you know, so I cannot do it tonight.
Okay, so you're not prepared?
I was under the assumption that you guys weren't likely able to pay a payment here, so I did not bring it.
Yeah, I don't know if you can.
You know, tomorrow, uh, I'd be more than happy to come down and, and make your payment.
There's the collector, you gotta pay her.
The, this, the property in question is not just, um, D, it's also E, because, um, Crossroad is eight acres of land that was, is taxed in the name of Ray Jean Craig heirs, and the trailer that sits on it is taxed in the name of Carolyn Craig heirs. Neither of these have been, have been probated. I believe you have a sister?
Yep.
Um, which, when probate occurs, would, whatever is there for assets would split between the heirs, between the heirs, because it, that's generally what probate does, if there's two left.
Absolutely.
To split it.
No, there is, to be honest, there's not going to be much left if, uh, the property is sold, it was, um, you know, 'cause the house sits on one acre, and the floor of the property is three sides around the house, um, and it's, uh, you know, it's, the lawn is all, is all I can, uh, talk about, and you can count on that pile, I mean, there's enough stuff over, uh, on that other property too, which I've been doing really well, and I have been cleaning up that property, um, I've haul vehicles out of there, I, I have been collecting junk for a few years, but there's no, the price isn't worth, it isn't even worth cashing in, people won't even haul them out of there now, if, uh, they're incomplete, so I've been having a hard time with that, but, uh, you know, I'm gonna have to end up giving them away, just to get them, get rid of them, but I have, I have cleared the driveway, I've cut the trees, and, uh, and I just want you guys to know that I will make this happen, and, you know, if you give me a chance, I was not under the assumption that this was able to be done until mom's assets were cleared up.
Well, see, if you don't mind me asking, and, and, I'm sorry for your loss, but when, when did your mother pass away?
She, she passed away two years ago.
Two years ago?
Yep, and, uh, I went down to the probate office, uh, just a couple of months ago and asked them, you know, what I had to do to start, uh, you know, the process, and she said, well, you have three years to start the process, and I've been trying to get hold of my sister, you know, after the passing, uh, you know, this division, and the, it's unfortunate, um, but, um, I just haven't been able to set us to get us in the same room, you know, I don't have a driver's license and whatnot, so I can't just drive up to her, um, but, um, yeah, that's, that's, but, uh, so I just.
So, so.
The three-year mark, I was, I thought that, um, I at least have.
I, I guess one of the questions we have to ask is, this has been going on for longer than three years, obviously, I mean, two, two years.
Yeah, mom, uh, she was very depressed, if you guys know, um, and she, uh, you know, after dad left, uh, she was very upset, and after my brother passed away, it was, um, basically, it seemed like she just died in time, you know?
Right, but nobody, but nobody's paid any taxes for several years.
Yeah.
And, and my question to you is, you, you have a couple thousand dollars today.
I do.
When will be the next time that we'll see you, will it be back here again, will we try to sell it again, or?
No, 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 I have.
Cause that, cause that's what, that's what happens, believe it or not, we, we do this a lot, and, and we try to help people out to stay with their property.
And I, I, I did it, and, um, alls I can say is, uh, I will, I will, I will do my hundred percent best, and I won't, I won't let you guys down, I, I can't afford to lose this property, because, uh, once probate is, you know, there is going to be a sale, you know, maybe, maybe I can talk my sister into it.
But you understand why we go through this process, that everybody in town is paying, paying their fair share, and when people don't, we have to, there is a process we have to go through.
Yeah, and, uh, I just need to comment on that, is, um, it's, it, I, it's not in my name, okay, and, um, I was told, you know, my sister had said, don't put, don't waste your money on that, just snatch, 'cause she was thinking, uh, of this was gonna happen, I don't know why she doesn't have any, want to save this, uh, but I do it, you know, and, uh, if, once it's in my name, you know, when this probate, I just, I would have paid this a long time ago, I made money all summer, but, um, I just was under the assumption that I didn't have to until probate was.
You were, you were served with a notice of saying that you had to pay?
Um, not me personally, but somebody had to pay, um, the taxes, you know, the, the.
The heirs.
Mail, you know, the heirs of Ray Jean, it, 'cause, um, it was, um, you know, the Carolyn Craig, when I keep it, no mistake, and, 'cause, uh, the trailer, you know, and I got to talk to my father about that, um, you know, that if he wants the trailer, he can, you know, he can have it, you know, um, if that's gonna make this bill any smaller, um, I'd be happy to give, give that up, but, you know, I will pay it all in full, and, you know, dismantle it and take care of it, and get rid of the trash, you know, I have, I have plans, I have a son, um, you know, I, my brother's daughter lives in California, she's, she, she.
And I, can I, can I ask, you, you, you don't, do you live at this property?
I do.
You live at this property? And you, you, do you have another property in town?
There's, no, there's one property, it's got two houses, and, uh.
There's two houses on this property?
The trailer, no, there's one, one house, and there, one's forty-two and one's forty-three, and, uh, you know, they're both have, you know.
And you live at the property on the crossroad?
Yeah.
And you don't have another house that you live at?
And, um, I stay, well, I will be staying, um, at the trailer, because it's easier to heat, um, you know, the boiler is shot in the house, so it's, it's still heating over there only, and.
Oh, over where? Right next door?
At mother's house, yes, there's two houses right around the corner, so.
So it's not on the same property, though?
Right, on, on the tax map, they're two different properties.
And, and that one's not in foreclosure?
Um, no.
And that's the one you're staying at?
No, I'm staying at the trailer, because it's easier, you know, and that's the one that's up for.
But you have the other house to stay in also?
Yes.
Okay, I, I just, I, I, I know that, I just wanted to make sure that you're telling, telling me the truth, that I do know that you have the other house?
Oh, yeah, there's two, there's two houses there.
Okay.
And, um, it's just basically which one's gonna be easier to heat, this one, and I believe it'll be the trailer.
So, have you looked at selling the other house?
Um, yes, that is an option, um, and I would just like to, either the time to get that done, um, because I know, uh, Craig Bowden is interested in the property across from his son, if, you know, which would be the house, he's interested in the trailer, he bought my, he bought my aunt's place after she passed, you know, so, I know he's got some, um, want in, in the property, so I would, you know.
You were gonna say?
Pick up for.
It did, but, um, the property that's the one acre in the house, um, was in foreclosure, prior to this, um, but, um, a relative from out of state paid all the taxes through current on that property, and paid some on the land, um, at Zero Crossroad, but not, that was the first payment since two thousand sixteen, and it was a small amount, the, um, the trailer, the trailer taxes, um, are seven years out, and the house took, the land is, uh, five, but the, the whole place was once in foreclosure, but, um, an uncle paid the house and the one acre.
My mother's brother. My mother's brother did.
Uh, paid all of the taxes to, for the property that's, has a Silver Lake address, because it's on the corner.
And, um, if I can add, um, I believe there's, uh, numbers, um, mixed up, because he, he, you know, he said he would manage to pay everything, and he just wasn't able to, or something, you know, 'cause a portion just didn't make sense, you know, 'cause I asked him, you know, where did the portion come from, and, uh, you know, I don't know if there was, there was something numbers, or if he just couldn't afford it, you know, if there's a significant, um, my brother, he did pass away in twenty fourteen, and then I believe my mother, um, well, that was, uh, that was the last year my brother was there, and he paid that last, um, three times, and, you know, after mom passed, it was, she was nothing there.
Yeah, the, the outstanding between the house, between the trailer and the eight acres is nine thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy cents, that's the outstanding taxes on the trailer that sits on that eight.
On these two lots, that are up for foreclosure?
No, the, the trailer sits on the lot that's up for foreclosure, the house and the one acre are not involved in this at all, they're, they're free and clear.
But are these two lots?
They're not lot, one is a building and one is a.
Right, but zero and one-sixty are both his?
The.
Theirs of.
Truthfully, neither, I, they're both properties where they, he has his things, because it's the heirs of, is the, of Ray Jean and Carolyn, that is the.
And I'm just trying to get them paid that way, when probate does get, um, swirled, can you switch over to me and my sister, and then we can go from there, whether we wanna sell the house or sell the trailer, personally, I'd like to sell the house, and, like, there's only acres, and, uh, you know, so, that's, uh, that's all in the future, but I just need to, um, save this, you know, now, and, uh, and I'm willing to dump everything I got into it.
Any other questions from the council?
What, just curiosity, what's a reasonable amount of time in your mind?
Um, I, I would, uh, I would say a year, but, you know, I mean, a six thousand dollar, like a personal loan or whatever, you know, it could pay off in a year, I mean, that's, that's reasonable, I mean, to try and keep my head above water, keep, keep warm, keep fed, you know, and everything else, um, but, um, you know, if, if it has to be shorter than that, you know, I, I would do my, do my best to get it done, and, uh, you know, I mean, I've got a couple of big items that I've been saving up, hanging onto among the life, you know, and it'd be unfortunate to sell things, but I think this is why I've kept them so long, you know, and I think those are gonna play a role in me saving them from my property, I can't, I can't.
To the, to the mayor's point, what I was trying to stress, that's, I believe, this has happened very often, that, okay, if you give two thousand tomorrow, then we don't see you again, then you're behind next year's taxes, now you're out two thousand and seven.
Yeah, I do understand, I know what's at risk here, and, um, I've, uh, we all know that, um, you know, I've, I've run pretty hard, uh, my days, um, you know, but at this point in my life, um, I've, uh, I've got a lot to, uh, I've got a lot to offer, and, uh, I would just work that chance, I have reached out to family, and I guess, uh, they don't want to, um, buy into it, they don't wanna help with it, so I believe this is up to me to do, and, uh, you know, maybe if I can get this done, um, then, then sometimes it's a long way, um, just, uh, just like, uh, just, uh, in my thinking, please.
You have questions? Thoughts?
Uh, I think we should, we give David a chance to get it figured out, I think if you come tomorrow and you work out a plan with Sue.
Tomorrow's Friday.
Oh, sorry.
How about Monday?
Monday.
Monday.
Come Monday, work out a plan with Sue and stick to it.
I will, I will, thank you, David, and, uh, you know, thank you, James, you know, thank you, David.
So we have a motion and a second, um, for this to go to the highest bidder, all those in favor? Opposed? You're gonna work with Mrs. Sard, and not gonna see you back here doing this again, 'cause this will, this will be, this will be the last chance, okay, we, and, and like, like Council Rankin says, we want people, we wanna work with folks, and this is your chance, you came forward, we're gonna give you a chance, okay?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Mayor. Yeah. Would pass on one-sixty then?
One-sixty and zero are tied together, they're both the same.
So we'll pass resolve twenty-three twenty-two, right?
Yes, both of those are on the same.
Yep, uh, next is resolve twenty-three twenty-three to approve the sale, tax-acquired property at nine-eighty River Road to the highest bidder, highest bidder is Nathaniel and Jessica Gray, thirty thousand two hundred and ten dollars, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? Yes, sir? You could just come up and state your name for me, please?
My name's Johnson, and, um, I have had some serious illness and.
Is, is this your property, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a life estate, so, um, I had open heart surgery, you didn't get to know, and I was only getting social security, uh, right now, I'm getting some time, and I'm getting, uh, benefits, uh, the benefits of social security, so, I, uh, have thirty-nine hundred dollars that I can give people tonight, um, and then pay seven hundred dollars a month, for fifteen months of social security.
Do you live in this residence now?
Yes, I do.
You do?
And it would be an awful hardship for me if I had to move.
Okay. And you're comfortable that you can keep up with those payments?
Seven hundred, yeah.
And it's something you wanted to work with Mrs. Sard, uh, on Monday, we're not gonna take your, we won't take your payment tonight, okay? Don't spend, don't, don't spend it all this weekend, all right?
Okay.
Um, but I appreciate you coming in here, and if the council's okay, um, we do have a motion and a second, we'll take a vote on it, um, but like I've said, and like we've all said, our, our number one job is to make sure that folks can have a place to sleep, but also make sure that we're fair to everybody in town.
Right.
And, and if you, if you can work on a plan, and like, like we just said to the last gentleman that was here, we, we can do this once, okay?
Yeah.
And we'll, and we'll go from there. All right, any other questions from the council? We have a motion and a second on resolve twenty, twenty-three, twenty-three, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion doesn't pass, come in and see Mrs. Sard on Monday, please, okay?
Thank you.
Next item is resolve twenty-three twenty-four to approve exterior, oh, I thought you were coming over here at me, um, resolve twenty twenty-three twenty-four to approve the exterior improvement grants in the amount of ninety-five thousand one hundred and twenty dollars, how would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second, have a motion and a second, hopefully everybody saw all the information that Rich had, anything else to add to that, Rich? Sue?
Only that, it, your ninety-five thousand dollar investment generates two hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars of investment in the community, which is a pretty good return on that investment.
Nice show. Yes, sir.
I'm in favor of it, improving the downtown is always a good attractant, of course, everybody can improve, but I just wanna make a statement of people that have spoke to me, that this is their tax dollars, they don't know the town, they see nothing, and this is at least the second time the town's done this, I just wanted to make.
I just wanted to express that.
Thank you.
They see it, they don't like it, but they understand.
Anything else? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is resolve twenty, twenty-three, twenty-five to approve a poverty abatement for the 2020 fiscal year in the amount of three thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Next is, uh, appointments, assignments, and elections. We have a warrant for the election on November eighth, 2022. Do we just need to sign that? Motion to approve? Could I have, could I have a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
I'm jumping ahead of the guy.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes. Next item is a quick claim deed, Jeffrey A. Weston and Benjamin R. Weston, map twenty-nine, lot eleven, tax lien certificate, six-thirty, 2020, six-twenty-five, 2021, six-sixteen, 2022, and sewer liens, nine-twenty-six, eighteen, three-twenty, nineteen, nine-twenty-six, nineteen, three-twenty-six, twenty, nine-twenty-twenty, three-twenty-one, twenty, three-twenty-three, twenty-one, nine-twenty-eight, twenty-one, and three-twenty-three, twenty-two. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion approved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Passes.
Thanks. I am pleased to report that as of November fourteenth, we will be having a second day of public transportation here in Bucksport, and there will be an additional stop on the route at Silver Lake Estates to allow residents there to participate. We have been working for some time to secure a second day and are thankful to Down East Transportation to making this happen and at no additional cost to Bucksport. And this also incorporates the schedule amendments that they were doing to try and make it possible for people to attend the luncheons at the senior center and also do other errands on the same day. The marina season ends this week after a successful boating season. Docks and floats will be pulled from there and the town dock, I believe, in early November. Thanks to Mike Ormsby, our marina crew, and to Rich Rotella for another great season. The parade of lights will be held on Saturday, December tenth, starting at six P.M. at the former Mill parking lot. The route will be Franklin to Mill to Main, and we encourage everyone to participate in some way, whether by entering the parade itself or coming out to watch it. The second round of the walls replacement project is in full swing, and the contractor is doing an excellent job. What a difference these installations are making. Thanks to Community and Economic Development Director Rich Rotella for his tireless efforts to get grants for fifty percent of the cost of these and keeping the projects moving. He's acting as inspector on, on these projects as well, so. I'd like to counsel the schedule an infrastructure committee, committee meeting for six P.M. prior to the council meeting on November tenth to discuss an economic development opportunity with aim involving the landfill at the former Mill site. Axel, our K-9 officer, and his handler, Officer Schmidt, are doing well at the main criminal justice academy drug identification training. There are five weeks left in the training program. An appeal of the decision on Gully Road to eliminate the public easement has been filed in court. As a result, our attorney has advised against putting the item on this agenda for discussion. Our attorney is reviewing our processes and information cited in the appeal, and I will update the council as information from these processes becomes available. In the meantime, the public easement remains in place on the entire Gully Road. The roof on the ice rink building and the roof on the pool building have been replaced, and the final coat of pavement has been placed on Silver Lake Road following the reclaimed grade and binder coat. Road edging continues to get all areas that need it completed before winter. Those were all three things that we had hoped to accomplish. The annual leaf collection for the in-town area of the community served by the water and sewer area will be held on Monday, November fourteenth, and Tuesday, November fifteenth. If you have your bagged leaves by the curb on these days, the town crew will pick them up. And finally, an update on the ambulance that we ordered some time ago. Delivery is now anticipated to be between July and December of 2023. We also do not have a delivery date on the plow truck or the sidewalk plow that were approved many months ago. Supply chain issues continue to dog these very major purchases.
Just aside on that leaf collection, I believe I saw something with Ghostport, pumpkin bags.
Yes, the senior center was handing out pumpkin decorated trash bags, and if people wanted to fill their, use their leaves in the yard to fill them, that Ghostport would utilize them for that as well.
Thank you. Also, there were several department head reports. Any department heads here have anything to report other than what was in their report? Folks doing a great job, just gonna give you the opportunity to come up and shine, but I know Rich will come up in a minute and I'm sure for something, so. We have approval of a central main power pole permit, intersection of Town Farm Road and Silver Lake Road. How would the council like to proceed? Motion and second, any questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Discussion of items not on the agenda for the council and the public? Anybody in the public have anything that's not on the agenda that I could discuss? You just state your name and where you're from, please? Thank you.
My name's Christina Reiver. I'm a Buckport citizen of twenty-seven years, and I'm participating in the vote that was held on September eighth, closing down the Gullies Road and taking the public easement away and making it private.
You just heard what the town manager said, the appeal, so.
I did, I want to make sure that I, my name is attached there.
Okay.
So my name is Christina Reiver, and I hope that I get the chance in the next town meeting to show my evidence, what, that I would like to present.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Go ahead, Rich.
You were right. First, I wanna thank my intern, Brandon Allen, he's a senior at Buckport High School. The sheet that you had that had the information for the improvement grants, he created that document. Nice to meet you, and I hope that you guys found it easy to use that for this week's enterprise. I've also had the opportunity to have Lars Rankin with me for the last couple of weeks. We were able to get eight garbage barrels of leaves out of Boogans Park. We also went up to the cemetery, Oak Hill Cemetery, and he was a cutting machine. He cut down all of the, the tree sprouts that were coming up that had the spikes on them, and that was two truckloads of those out of the cemetery. And then the highway crew, Kevin Potter, if you haven't driven by, the cemetery is in fantastic shape, so I just wanna give all those guys some props. And while I was out on, this past Friday, Lars worked with the guys at the arena to start taking out the, the power down off the docks where some of the boats are, have been removed already. So we've got some young folks who are very interested in their community, who are doing a fantastic job. Brandon does have a surprise that we're gonna present for this year's Festival of Lights, and as soon as that's available, I'll make sure that you're all aware of that. So I just wanna thank the youth of the town, and thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Anybody else from the public, anybody from the council have anything on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, real quickly.
Sir?
You'll notice I voted all by my lonesome on a couple of things this evening, and I just, and it was discussed at the last meeting, and I, and I'd like to just restate it. I don't like that these properties are going out to bid, and people are submitting bids, and then we are, for lack of a better way of describing it, pulling the rug out from underneath them after they submit those bids. I think it is very important that we, as a council, put together a policy that prevents that from happening. That can't continue. Because what, what, we run the risk of happening at that point is when we do put these out to bid, nobody bids. And if I were one of those bidders this evening, I'd be pretty unhappy. And I think we need to do that sooner rather than later, to decide as a council how we wanna handle that moving forward.
Thank you. Anything else from the public, council? Next item is upcoming public hearings, designation committee assignments. I don't believe we have any committees on the twenty-seventh, do we?
May we please schedule a waterfront committee? We just received that packet that I handed out to members of the waterfront committee from the, for the entire waterway project.
Okay, so you wanna do that before the next council meeting?
At six P.M. if you'd like.
And then the next one we had was when you asked for November tenth?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think there's some public forums coming up for the candidates also, between now and the next Tuesday? And those are streamed also, correct?
Yes.
They're on the YouTube channel for the.
Elm Street Congregational Church.
And Tuesday is the council candidates, right? And school board. And then the legislative candidates are another date. The twenty-fifth.
The following twen, right, okay.
It's at Brown Hall.
Yep, it's at Brown Hall, in person if you wanna go, correct, also? Thank you. Uh, nothing else? Next item is adjournment.
Motion second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everybody.